PM, on August the fifteenth, and we are meeting at the San Isabel Lodge. Would you like to join us for the pledge? Angie, would you like to lead us in that, ma'am?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that.
Because her mouth was full.
I know, yeah.
That's okay. I can't watch it now.
As I looked up, I saw that. Madam Secretary, would you conduct the roll call, please?
I'm sorry?
What's the password?
It's, um, I'll go write it down for you guys.
All of us have, no slide?
Mr. Flower.
Present.
Mr. Pandon.
Here.
Mr. Prince.
Here.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And clerk to the board, Kelly Campbell.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. Amendments to the agenda, gentlemen?
No, sir.
Mr. Prince?
No, sir.
I have one. I would request that we delete the real estate land bid item from the new business agenda. Do we need a motion to that effect?
I don't see it.
It's not on there yet.
It's been taken off.
Oh, you took it off? Okay, I didn't update mine. Then I...
I'm sorry.
Nope, that's okay. I obviously don't have the latest version of the agenda. My mistake.
There are copies down there.
Yeah. I've got one. I was just reading from my computer. Sorry.
He's all electronic.
Oh, thank you. Ninety-two.
Snowslide ninety-two.
Alright.
That's pretty close to seventeen. I could see your mistake.
Yeah, or seventy-six.
We will move on into audience introductions. Mr. Ellison, would you like to introduce yourself, please?
Charlie Ellison, a colleague for the Tourism Board and West Cliff President.
I'm Jim.
Angie Artaburn, Secretary of Attorney, George and the... Justice Danny Rosen.
And we're doing audience introductions as you speak.
Shannon Bartlett, sure.
Thank you, sir. Nice to have you. Welcome, all of you. Appreciate you being here. Our next item is approval of the minutes from July thirty-one, August seven, and August eight. Sheriff would entertain a motion.
I'll move with seven. You want all three of them? Seven, eight, thirty-one, and seven and eight.
He moved two. He made the motion.
All three of them?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the approved, sorry, the minutes of July thirty-first, August seven, August eight. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carried. The minutes have been approved, July thirty-one, August seven, and August eight. Thank you, Kelly, for providing those. And Ms. Brenda, because she stepped in and did a couple. We appreciate that. Thank you. Commissioner Items? Mr. Prince, would you like to start?
Yeah, I attended two Tourism Board meetings and worked with what more. We finalized the agreement with the Historical Society, and they're moving stuff in as we speak. And really, since last week, I think that's all I did. No, I spoke to a couple constituents. One, I had several people on the same road complain about...
Not a road problem?
Well, they would like to see some grading on...
Which road?
Two sixty is what they were complaining about. And I think they got together and said they'd each call separately to make it seem like it was, you know, a couple of complaints.
Big deal.
Yeah. It was raining, and I realized we're getting a little ruddy in areas.
Yeah, I've been getting them.
Yeah, and that's not, I mean, that's, you know, too late, so I thank God for the rain, but it doesn't do well just for the road.
Yeah.
Other than that, that's all I'd have done.
Alright, sir. Thank you. Commissioner Cameron?
Couple things. Had a great community meeting or meal last night. That was great. Shannon was there. Heard you flew by. You did a flyby.
Yep.
Missed a good one.
You guys went down?
Yeah, it was great.
At the community center and whatnot?
Yeah, it was good. And the bathroom's still there. The urinal.
Yeah. I talked to him about that yesterday.
I know. But that was a nice time. Did a good job on it. Then I've been working with the OTC six branch on the airport contract with Armstrong. No more news to update than what I said last time, other than the airport finalizing the contract. And based on time, depends on how quickly they get things done, paving could become an issue. So there may be a winter break between, or definitely let the contracts, when they're at the time, they're going to put an RFP out, select the contractor, and then if we have to want a break, and so, it's fine, it will. And then, speaking of the OTC six guys, they also, I mentioned, they donated money for the scoreboard. So if you will drive by the football field, you'll notice the scoreboard no longer sitting there. We got it off. And the new one arrives this weekend, so we're trying to get it mounted. And we got to straighten the posts, going to put a French drain across the end of that football field, so that it don't drain that. It gets pretty swampy at that west end.
That's good. Has there been, or is there a discussion as to invite to thank them? I mean, the county or the school district, maybe both?
We ought to probably do that. That's a good idea.
Maybe a little luncheon or something. That's a nice investment they're making.
They want to get involved with the community, and the only closest one is us, of course, and then, of course, there's Gardner.
Sure.
But they really do want to get involved. And we are putting an OTC six sign up underneath the scoreboard. It's a nine-by-nine sign.
Great, that's fine.
To recognize them, but that's a great idea.
Maybe a luncheon and invite the community.
We ought to do that. Because they're working with us.
Yeah.
Time before, you know, the summer.
Yeah. My initial thought is that would be incumbent upon the school, but it's not a county project.
Of course, there's the county airport in there.
Yeah, but the school itself, I mean, I don't think it'd be appropriate for the county to post something that they're doing for the school. I certainly would appreciate an invitation to go to that, whatever it is.
I think it would be a good thing, then, for both of us represented.
To do a nice thing for the county, too.
Airport one slash scoreboard.
Joint thing, I don't know. Whatever.
We can talk about that when it gets closer.
Good.
And then, the roads, I've been getting a lot of comments on roads, because they have been drying out and washing out. And working with Gary on that, a few things. Which reminds me, we will be getting a scraper back up here for that airport job, because that work will be done before it isn't dependent upon the weather. That's all I have.
Okay. I have a question about the airport. I don't know that we've gotten a hard and fast estimate on the cubic yardage of the material that needs to be moved yet.
Because they haven't finished the survey yet.
So my question would be, should the county consider putting that out for a bid versus doing it ourselves?
Could. The reason that we're doing it is to help them defray some of the costs, which is, they're going to pay for it, the scraper, and our money to do it. I don't think it's, we don't have, it's not a time issue, really. I think it's a good partnership thing.
Um, yeah, and I bring that up just, I think common sense would rule to say that I doubt private entity could do it any cheaper than what the county can do with their own equipment.
Probably less, because you have to pay their profit, however.
I wonder if...
Well, we are putting that for bid, Tom. All the dirt work, the exhumation, the paving, and the concrete work is going to be done for the taxiway.
Right. Yeah, I was just thinking about the removal of that berm on the east side of the runway.
Right.
If neither one of you have a concern about that, I'm okay with it. I just, we haven't had that discussion yet about whether we should or shouldn't put that out. Again, I don't know how anybody can compete with that, so...
And that's, you know, since he's funding it, and it's good with the, you know, we're doing what we can to make sure that the costs are low on the bids we're taking out. So, he's happy.
Good. Okay. Anything else, sir?
I'll do it.
Okay. I have a couple items. I think Ms. Brenda's going to talk about the payment in lieu of taxes pending lawsuit at the federal level.
I saw that on Clinton.
Okay. So I will not bring that up during my Commissioner Items. I wanted to give you an update on the activity with the water leak repayment from the Saddle Club. They have made their first installment, three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. So that check has been turned over to Donna, and I've got a receipt to provide, actually, we already mailed it to the Saddle Club, so that's been done.
That leaves how much? Three thousand, something like that?
Yeah, it was half, so it leaves that same amount. So three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars still outstanding. And then, Silver West Airport is hosting their annual open house and fly-in breakfast on August the twenty-fifth, at seven o'clock, seven to, they thought about eleven. They'll be cooking pancakes and sausage and whatever. So they asked me to mention that. I know that Lynn Legree was apologetic that he did not tell us that when he was here at the airport, gave his airport report, but he was...
That's the twenty-fifth?
August twenty-fifth, yes, ma'am. Seven o'clock. And then, the other thing I just wanted to bring up, I don't expect action on it today necessarily, but I wanted to have a discussion at least, or start the discussion, that Ms. Brenda, the administrative assistant, went through and reformatted and re-typed the entire zoning regulations. So I, at some point, would maybe like to put on the table the possibility of giving her some comp time for that additional work, but we can, again, I'm just throwing that out, so I don't forget it, basically.
How come that happened, anyway? Was that just an old, bold, they didn't have a...
Yeah, that zoning reg was in four or five different formats. I'll let Brenda speak to that.
Well, what I did was, I took the PDF that was presented as the finished product that you guys passed, and then I converted it to a Word document and made sure all the formatting and all the page numbers matched and everything. Took me about three full days to do it.
If you had looked at that document, especially towards probably the last third of the document, it was in every font size. There were copy and paste. There were fax pages that were copied and stuck in there, and it was looking a little rough, so...
And some of the, some of the document is still, like, pictures that are pasted in there, because it was another document that was scanned, yeah, so...
They didn't have a Word doc, but they made a PDF copy of it.
I don't know how, Vernon did that. He created that PDF, so I don't know how he did it, so...
Yeah. So anyway, I wanted to just highlight that for your thoughts.
So, in lieu of that, we could just give her a standing ovation and call it even.
There you go. We've got to do that on live stream, though.
Yeah, that's right. Commissioner Prince, you had something?
Is there a reason why we want to put that off and not just resolve it now?
Just curious. The only reason, in my thinking, was that I just didn't want to dump that on you and you expect some immediate action. If you're comfortable with that, I certainly am.
I have no issue with that.
Okay, then I would move...
Would be more or less comfortable next time?
I would move that we approve two days' comp time for her work invested in, time spent on updating that zoning regulation. To me, it certainly looks professional, more professional than it did the previous.
I don't think we need to move on that. We put system. We got, we got work.
Well, I'm going to second it, just, but I'm with you.
It's okay, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah.
Where do you draw the line?
Yeah, but, so we can get to discussion, I do have a question.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve two days' comp time for Ms. Gady for work done on updating the zoning regulations. Discussion?
I have a question. Was this done during work hours, or was this done on...
Some of it was, some of it wasn't. I asked Brenda that very question myself. We did not have a discussion of X percent was...
The percent, I don't care, I was just...
Yeah. And my thinking was initially, too, Jane, I appreciate your question, was I don't think any of her regular duties suffered while she was doing that during the workday. If she said, "I didn't do any administrative work because I was working on the document," to me, that was different. I think she did above and beyond. This is where I come in.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You bet. Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. I'm sorry, I forgot to vote. Aye, oppose, nay. Motion carried.
Still carried.
Yeah, still carried, whether I voted or not. That's exactly right. Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate that. Let's see. I don't think anybody said this, so I'm going to say it. It's very obvious to three of us, but we all did participate in a photo session with Berta Hega following the signing of our land, lease-to-purchase agreement with the Hega Foundation, or Hega Trust. And hopefully, I'll see some results of that somewhere along the line. I don't know if it's going to go to the papers or just exactly what that was, but... August ninth and tenth, I took two days, personal days. August thirteenth, I attended a Fair Board meeting in Silver Cliff Town Hall, certainly as a visitor. Again, I informed them that I would not be in any official capacity as a member of their meetings. I also, on August fourteenth, attended the Tourism Board Workshop that Angie Artaburn chaired. That was held in the Commissioner's Room. And then, last evening, I attended the Custer County Republican Central Committee meeting that was in the annex as well. And for the good of the order, the Republican Committee is sponsoring a free hot dog picnic in the Pavilion Park across the street from the West Cliff Park. And I want to say this publicly, that it was unanimous that all the Commissioners would be invited to that. And obviously, we were thinking about you. So it's not a Republican dinner, it's just a Republican-sponsored picnic, and everybody said, "Well, absolutely, Commissioner Prince needs to be invited as well as the other two."
I appreciate that, if you pass it on.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah.
What day?
I've got it written down. I'll have to dig that out. We talked about three different dates last night of things, and if I just yell one out, it'd be wrong. Well, there were three different activities.
Oh.
So let me look real quick here. Well, you know what? I didn't have my calendar with me, so I didn't write them in here. I believe the picnic is the eleventh of September. No, yeah, that's a Saturday. That's correct.
That's a Tuesday. Eleven to September?
Yes, I'm sorry. Then that would be the fifteenth.
September.
Yeah, it's a Saturday. I think that's the first home football game for the high school, and I suggested that they, that the committee send an invitation to their athletic director and invite their team to come over and have hot dogs, and so they were going to do that as well, so...
You want them to lose?
Yeah. I said, "Well, maybe." Somebody said, "Well..."
Don't get them too fast.
"Is that going to be safe to have both teams in the same area?" And I said, "Oh, I think so."
Who did that play?
Is that a no?
Yeah. Who was it, then?
Simla.
Simla.
I may not have said that, sorry.
Is that a no?
Eleven to one.
Thank you.
Yep. And I believe that is all I had to bring before the Board today. So, anything else, gentlemen, under Commissioner Items? No. Okay, thank you. Attorney Items?
I also attended the Tourism Board meeting last week, and I was at the Tourism Board Workshop yesterday, just sort of, I've never really had anything to do with Tourism Board, but since there's a big changeover, I thought I'd see what was going on.
Are you surprised? Did it work?
Uh, well, I mean, the Tourism Board has changed since last week.
Yeah, that's right.
But, yeah, I think they'll get everything together, so... This isn't county-related, but we had a, Dark Skies had a star party on Monday night for the meteor shower, and Charlie was there. He went around and did a head count, and he counted about a hundred and seventy people that showed up down there. A lot of them just up in the park, you know, parked along the bluff, looking in the wrong direction from where the meteors were going to be coming from, but we didn't see very many anyways. But, well, I mean, Charlie talked to them, and I, you know, my participation, I talked to a lot of them, too. It's amazing how many came from, even out of state, but from Denver, Colorado Springs, Pueblo places. And a lot of them were staying overnight, and so obviously, they're going to be having some meals here, and, you know, I always talk them up, spend some time, go to all our shops and everything while you're here, so I think it did draw some folks in.
Great.
The, other than that, as far as county work, I didn't do much of anything. I'm still recuperating from getting that lease purchase agreement done. And that may take another six months before I'm ready to do anything else.
Yeah, we don't want to hurry.
How many comp they have?
Don't hurt yourself.
On that inquiry we got about the class action suit for the PILT funds, I think that's a no-brainer. I looked into it a little bit more. There's a list of all the Colorado counties that have already opted in, and I was looking at, I was wondering, well, how come Denver's not here? How come El Paso's? That's because they don't have any federal land.
Right.
It's all the mountain, mostly all the mountain counties, but my recommendation is you just authorize me to go ahead and jump on board, and hopefully, you know, we'll get maybe ten, eleven, twelve thousand dollars out of that somewhere down the road after the Attorney's fees are deducted.
Can I add on to that, just real quick, before you move on? And just for the sake of clarity, Attorney Smith is referred to PILT, which is Payment in Lieu of Taxes, which is actually a payment the county receives to offset the fact that we have so much federal land that we don't receive tax revenue from that, so they have this Payment in Lieu of Taxes program. So that's what he's referring to. Anything else, sir?
No, that was it.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Administrative Assistant Items?
I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you. And we'll allow public comment at this time, if anybody has anything they want to comment to the Commissioners about. Again, I would just say that, please understand that it is public comment. It does not necessarily mean that it's public discussion with the Commissioners, but we would hear any comment that you want to have. And of course, it's a Commissioner's prerogative to respond if they so choose. So, if there's any comment?
I just had a comment in regards to what Clint was saying with the dark skies. You know, as a business owner, you know, I was asking people, if they come in or different things, and I specifically asked if they attended the dark sky. Some of them will say, but sometimes you got pride out of them. And I had more in from any of the dark sky scenes this time. I think it was time of year, and it was such a spectacular thing. And they were saying, you know, various, I mean, Raven Woods, the West Cliff Inn, you know, I'd asked where they stayed. Some VBOs, you know, but I was just impressed. And it wasn't just retired, it was families. So, you know, that definitely, in fact, they stayed over, and that's what you want, and did come into town to at least come into the shops. Bakery got it pretty well, you know, which is a good thing, but, you know, still, at least to get them into the shops, so... Out of all of the font sizes, we had people come in, like, early, ahead of time to do a viewing, but this one was a little bit more special, it just seemed like, for some reason. So I just wanted to reiterate that. Am I allowed to public comment?
You certainly are, yes, ma'am.
So I want to comment on that, too, Clint, because on Monday, I was in my office, and the head of elections from Secretary of State's office came in, and I said, "What are you doing here?" And he said, "I..." First, he told me he was there for an inspection, and then he left, and he said, "No, I'm on vacation." And I said, "Oh, where are you going?" And he said, "Well, I've been staying here for the last two days in a vacation rental out by the airport." And he said, "My daughter and I've been, last night, we watched the meteor shower," and he goes, "You know, you guys are known for your dark skies." And I said, "Yes, we are." And so, I thought that was funny, that he would come to West Cliff to vacation for that reason.
I talked to one woman in particular from New York City who had seen the thing on TV over a year ago about it, and said she'd been wanting to come, and so she was here for several days and just eating it up. It does bring them in from out of state.
And if, if, I'll just pile on to that. I do have about half a dozen, eight interviewed people, thirteen-minute audio tape on my phone, people I interviewed while I was there on Monday. If you want to get the color and read it from the...
Thank you.
Good. Monday, the peak for the meteor shower was Tuesday.
Monday, you...
Well, actually, actually, it was really more late Sunday, early Monday, but the guy that scheduled it for Monday night, I didn't know what he was doing, and that was me.
Yeah, is that what it was?
But actually, the night, the previous night, the sky was much clearer. There was a lot of smoke in the...
You got a lot of the smoke in here.
Yeah. But people, people still had a good time. They were lined up, you know, ten feet deep, and all the telescopes we had, so...
Good. Yeah, I had intended to stay up and go out on the front lawn and do some looking, and of course, fell asleep.
That's one of those low-impact type things that you aren't always aware.
Good. Further public comment? Hearing none, we'll move on. I don't believe we have any staff reports. Nor I, do I see any unfinished business. Gentlemen, do you have any unfinished business to bring before the Commission?
I do not, sir.
Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to new business. The first item of business is Tourism Board appointment. I would turn the floor over to Ms. Artaburn.
Yes, Charlie was one of the, Ellis was one of the people that put in a lot of interest in the first go-around. The Tourism Board, at the time when we had the Board had approved for both people to be appointed, but at the time, we only had one opening. So it was, the first one was hit, with the second, when another opening came up, we'd have to come before the Board again for approval. So, the other opening has come up, and that's why we're here, is to have that to go through, answer any questions that you might have. Mr. Ellison's here, so if you have any questions or concerns, he kind of knows a little bit what's going on, but he's been very open and receptive, and learning, and put forth a good, positive thing for the Tourism Board itself. He does have a vacation by owner places that he does lease out. In addition to, he does have past experience with finance and with marketing as well, which always helps, at least, you're talking and getting new ideas out there. Not saying that will go that way, but it does give that. And I think he seems open enough to where, if he doesn't agree with something, that we've gone forward, but he's willing to still be a partner and play with that. I don't know him real well, but that's, you know, what I do love him, so, and I really do. If I didn't feel he would fit, I wouldn't say, because I don't want to go where we've been. We do have a new round that is going to be coming through for you guys to approve, but he was already pre-approved the first go-round.
I hope that we accept Charlie Ellison as a new member of the Tourism Board.
I'll see.
I'll see.
It's been moved to second to appoint Charlie Ellison as a member of the Tourism Board discussion.
I'm sitting with, in the workshop yesterday, I was very impressed. Very pleased that you're willing to donate the time and I thank you for doing that.
It's going to take some time away from my positive work, but...
What's more important?
Well, I was going to mention that he, that Charlie is on the proxy and he's a good team player and is definitely willing to go above and beyond. He's a good guy, so...
And this term, because we're filling a term correctly, or correct. So, I'm assuming this appointment would be valid if the board approves the appointment, would be valid until January of 2019, is that correct?
Right. At which time, end of December, he would reapply again.
Unless you really torque him on.
My wife will be happy to hear that.
Whose position is he filling? Is it B. Prince?
And then, people may not know that we appointed Kit Tyler, proprietor of the West Cliff Inn, to the Tourism Board. And he has since resigned. I think we all, three commissioners, received an email from Kit indicating because of personal issues that he resigned as of August 10th. I took that as a formal correspondence from him. Gentlemen, would you agree with that, that you're satisfied with the email resignation? Commissioner Prince, you okay with that?
I'm sorry, he, he had some wonderful ideas. I was very disappointed when I got that. I just want to say, I think, as is with Charlie, he would have been an excellent member.
So, eventually, I mean, currently, right, as of right now, I believe the revised statute indicated that you had to have a minimum of three people on your board. Typically, in the recent history anyway, you've had five. So, probably looking at appointing at least one to make it a legal organization.
In regards to the second go-around. And I would rather, if there's only one good candidate, that's all we have until some others come aboard. Just because they say they're interested, it's not a good candidate. And that's something I would respect. So, I feel that in terms of each time, there's two of us that are meeting their workshops so we can do advice and then present it to the commissioners. And Renee is ex officio.
So, how many more applicants have you got?
Right now, only one, but I know of two others that are coming in.
Yeah, I've had a couple queries, so Peggy Collins, one of those.
Yeah, and I am going to be asking her to resubmit because she, what she has doesn't really follow the guidelines and I wouldn't accept it.
And there's a couple others that we're asking, if you have to see if they're...
I did not bring that with me and I apologize.
In the public notice, it states that they need to be from certain areas, you know, as far as classifications. You know, like we talked at one meeting, it's a little broader.
Yeah, I was just trying to recollect what the statute says and subsequently what your bylaws say, which are subservient to the statute. But, I thought the bylaws or the statute indicated that, I'm sorry, the bylaws indicated that an interested party needed to submit a letter of interest. I don't think there was anything in there about a dossier or a resume or anything else. I believe it would be perfectly legitimate for somebody to just write a letter to the Tourism Board and say, "I am interested in being on the Tourism Board."
All they have to do.
That's all they have to do, that's my understanding. So, I'm going to take a little issue with when you say you wouldn't accept something. If she indicated in that letter, "I am interested in being on the Tourism Board," to me, that is the end of it. How the Tourism Board makes their decision whether or not to recommend somebody then would be, in my opinion, based on additional information or an interview or whatever. But, I think on the surface, if she submitted a letter of interest, then she should be considered.
In the public notice, it states that resumes would be accepted.
Not required, right.
But, at some point, something has to be there to make sure they meet the minimum qualification.
Exactly.
Well, there aren't any, that's my whole point.
She didn't have that in front of her.
And that's my whole point. I don't believe there are any minimum qualifications. I just think they have to...
That you'd say...
Well, you have to come from the tourism industry.
That's a biggie.
And we've got these five different classifications in the public notice that states that. And it states present or past experience.
But, we also know that Ms. Collins is a restaurateur. And the workshop yesterday, it seemed evident that restaurateurs and with Clint's guidance on the memo he wrote a while back, she certainly qualifies. So, then, as far as I'm concerned, from my standpoint only, I think she's a viable candidate that the committee now needs to...
Yeah, I mean, I just...
Procedurally, isn't it up on the Tourism Board to say, "Okay, here's what we want, here's what." Got to convince us that they're legit.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to point out, I think that's all that they really have to do to be considered is just send a letter of interest.
Correct.
That was the only point I wanted to make.
And then, they would determine whether the minimum qualifications and if there's one space and multiple candidates, they could choose the person they feel most qualified.
And also, Angie, I think if you've got like 10 people, you're going to recommend the first couple, you know, we need to understand how you made the cut. Because our impression, your view may be different than ours and might be different than a bigger look at what's going on. So, we need to understand the field that you chose.
I think it's our job to let you guys know that history or whether we're in the reasoning for. And also to let you have a copy of all the other applicants. I mean, it's not like we just present, once we approve, you need to have a copy of all of them.
Gentlemen, isn't there still a motion on the table?
Yes, we're in discussion of that motion.
Okay, but the motion was just about Charlie, this kind of going into...
Correct, that's true. We have...
I just, Charlie was on the edge of his seat here, wondering if he's going to be approved.
Yeah, it's a great point, thank you, sir. You're exactly right.
I went either way.
And you pointed out the things we asked about. He's got a business and he's a good guy.
Yeah, and I was remiss in my duties as chair and I apologize to Mr. Ellison and the rest of you. We should have kept a little more on track.
Did you have other items? He was brought up before and there's a couple others.
Yeah, we've already...
I would just off a little bit. Well, I represent the, well, it's called the newer version of vacation or lodging. I would definitely make every effort to reach out to the traditional lodges and get input. And it's the first thing I want to do is reach out and talk to people, get info. Exact method or agenda, except to do what we've been commissioned to do, is to promote heads and beds. I tend to be a good bridge builder and collaborator, good career in sales and marketing. And it's all about getting to know needs, how to fill them and creating a good coalition behind a intangible product.
I find myself in a bit of a quandary here. And I would ask, with all due respect, sir, that you hear what I'm saying in a respectful... For me, I will try to present my thoughts in a respectful manner. I have some reservations. I've had reservations about the Tourism Board from the first day I sat in on the Tourism Board meeting. I think that's probably been documented. I question the direction the Tourism Board is going. I don't really have the platform or the authority to inject my feelings about the direction the Tourism Board is going, other than having a vote on who is on that Tourism Board. I cannot pass judgment on Mr. Ellison, really, because I haven't had any dealings with this gentleman. He has indicated to me that he's lived in the county for two years. I don't know that that's a big stumbling block. I'm kind of torn about what I believe and what I would like to see the Tourism Board going and how I feel the Tourism Board may go. Again, I may be crucifying you illegitimately because I don't know that. So, the other thing, part of that plays into my mind is that I have personally vowed as a commissioner, not just to rubber stamp everything, but to try to question and learn. I certainly don't want to usurp the authority of the Tourism Board, but I believe with the Tourism Board, more than any other board in this county, we have an additional responsibility because of the money that's involved. It is a tax. I've had that argument. People say, "That's not a tax." It is a lodging tax. Not everybody in the county pays it. That's the big distinction for me, that it's a lodging tax that we charge people that do stay in our county as guests. So, but I do believe it's incumbent upon us to pay attention to this board, maybe more so than others. Because of that, this year it was $50,000 roughly. Last year it was in the 30,000 or 20,000 to 30,000. It's a lot of money. I don't know that any commissioners, that we as a commissioner, let me rephrase that, have specifically asked for some kind of a report, a progress report, an expense to say, "Hey, we need to know where the money's being spent, how it was spent, what impact we've had," so on and so forth. So, I know I'm kind of beating around the bush. I have some concerns about Mr. Ellison being on this Tourism Board. They may be founded, they may be unfounded. So, that being said, I just wanted that out on the table to try to be open and honest about my feelings. And I don't know what else that I can say.
I have a couple comments in regards, number one, as far as where the Tourism Board's going. That's why I stayed because I didn't want... But, now that we don't have, quote, "the thumb" over, we can get back the basics of where we needed to go. I don't know if you heard any, I talked about it at the workshop afterwards. Even the website, it needs to be back. It needs to be more basic and more Custer County-oriented with some changes. In regards to a report, per our bylaws, we come before you and give a yearly report of what's going on, what's happening. As far as the money's coming in, you know, we have a budget that we've already started working on that we need to finalize. We never use all of that money. We always set X amount in reserve because we don't know what the next year's going to bring in as far as revenue. You know, it could be major fires or major something where we don't have that lodging venue. So, then at least we have something in reserve to work on. So, you'll see within the financial report, there's always, I think there's probably 20,000 or more that we're not using at all, but that's part of what we will use for 2019.
I'm going to ask you to pause a minute because back to exactly what Attorney Smith said. And I know I just did what I'm asking you probably not to do and that's kind of derailed a little bit, but I wanted to set the framework of how I feel as a county commissioner.
Let me respond because I don't have a whole lot to respond to because you're fairly vague, except that I do know running a business and what fiduciary responsibilities are, especially when you're spending significant amounts of money. I'm very, very attuned to that. And I would say what I would do, I don't know what needs to be done differently on the website, but I do know that marketing is a total waste if you can't measure. And so, I would say, you know, let's make sure we have the SEO and type of tracking tools so that when we do something, we can then go back and figure out at least web traffic, what's happened. We can't necessarily relate web traffic to a dollar in a restaurant or a dollar in a head. They're correlated. So, that's where I would steer us, to make sure that we're getting a bang for the buck.
Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate it. Mr. Prince?
I think the question on the table was whether we're going to approve Mr. Ellison as a member of the Tourism Board or not. The rest of your comments, respectfully, don't belong here, I don't think. You need to either be in a workshop or some other discussion or some other forum. The motion and the second is on the table to accept him or not, this individual. I can't think of too many more people in this community that would have better qualifications where we would choose them over Mr. Ellison. So, I personally feel that this discussion has gone way beyond where it needs to be, needs to stick with. He's on the, whereas to approve him, I personally, and I'm not asking you to agree, but I personally feel he's exactly the type of person that I think the Tourism needs. On a side note, that's not part of this, I agree with you, this has been in total disarray and the whole purpose of revamping is to get new blood, new people, new ideas. And that's what he stands for.
Yeah, in the true spirit of the discussion of a motion is really for any one of a group, in this case, the three of us, the true spirit is to express your ideas, suggestions, whatever, and actually to try to convince fellow commissioners to vote a certain way. That's really the true spirit about what discussion is and I've certainly derailed from that. And I accept what you say completely, Commissioner Prince, like that. Yeah, absolutely, no problem. Any further discussion on the approval?
I haven't said anything. Because I have the same concerns, not because I don't, well, I don't know you. But, the issue to me is, back to the fact that it's a tax, it's not a separate tax district. We do have authority to make sure that it conforms with our view of the values of this county and where it's headed and that kind of thing. So, that's why you come to us for approval and we can decide not to because that person, we don't believe meets our requirement. As even the basic ones like, "Are you a resident?" and blah, 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 that's basic. So, Tom had a good point and the point is, we find ourselves in a funny situation because we've got a whole bunch, we've got vacancies. Now, whether he's the most qualified, we don't know. Because I don't know why we're looking at it in two ways, say. Right now, you're on recess, you all are, you're sitting there, you're taking time. I guess you met in a workshop or there's a workshop.
You had a meeting in a workshop.
I'm just confused about what they said. And you're taking time off for the summer rush and then you get back into the regular day. But, maybe, that's irrelevant. So, the bottom line to me is, we know there's other applicants. We know there's the people that want to apply. And so, why do we have to, why wouldn't we want to make sure we understand the whole pool before we vote to fill a vacancy? Because I don't know where you fall out. Maybe be number one, maybe be number five, if there were that many.
But, he was also in within the first round.
I don't care.
And nobody else at that time expressed an interest.
That doesn't matter. Right now, if we'd have jumped on it right away, that would have been filled probably. But, that didn't happen. So, it doesn't matter.
The vacancy wasn't there at the time.
And so, but we didn't vote and that vacancy gained. And so, and other people, because, you know, of what happened in the past, a lot of people didn't want to apply. And now, they got, oh, we didn't discuss it and that. So, to me, I would like to, I want to do the best we can. And in fact, I did have, I've thought about this a lot. I even called Chip Taylor up to see what he thought of the resolution that made this stood us up and our authorities based on what it says. And so, it is our, it is the three of us. We want to help get the best qualified people we can. I'm not saying you're not, but, and I would look forward to it. And I don't know anything about you. I hadn't even read anything other than what Angie has said, other than what we, you know, and what you pointed out, a letter of interest is just, "I want to join." And now, you all have to...
Did you receive the packet?
Yeah, I did, I got it. I wanted to...
Lots of information.
Just compare it, I got the package. Anyway, so I would like to wait personally, is my opinion, and let's fill the board. That's what we do in the fall when we get all, everybody presented. So, we're going to either reaffirm them or somebody's, we've got applicants in. We decided to take them around. We have that opportunity now, the one I was going for.
That said, and I totally respect that, as I said earlier, that I felt that he wasn't really somebody that was going to be qualified.
I don't value qualifying.
Right. And I understand that there are going to be others that are coming forward.
I stacked him up against somebody else.
And everything. So, I just, I just really feel that even now going forward, it would be a help. And even in helping to decide on when they come forward, our suggestion for other people to come on forward too. come on forward too.
All right. Further discussion?
That's my thought.
In response to what you said, I feel it's incumbent upon me as a chair to tell you that if you choose to introduce a motion to postpone a table, that would be within the rules, that will take precedence over a main motion, which is a motion to approve Charlie Ellison. So.
I would like to do that.
The chair would entertain a motion, if that's your desire, sir.
I would like to table this and bring it.
And would you put that in the form of a motion, then, if that's your?
I move that we table this, and let's get Angie to bring, you've got another interest we know of.
Well, we have till the 27th of August, for people, 27th of August.
To do what?
For people to do their letters of interest in the second round.
Why wouldn't we?
And then, and then, we have a workshop.
Your motion to table is out of order, it would need to be a motion to postpone.
Postpone, I suppose.
And let me explain why that is.
You're right, because we did have the motion.
Yeah, but let me explain what the difference between table with motion and table to postpone. Table, the motion to table would, would have to be a direct result of something more important or more urgent business to force us to table an item of business.
Right, that is not.
You're well within your right to postpone, you can do that to a certain time, or you can do that at a, to a.
I would like to postpone this until after we get the next round of applicants, and let's bring all, 10 of them, or all, only two, maybe it's only two, just confirming where we are. And to me, it gives us and the public a chance to know that we are looking, did you know?
Okay, hold on just a second, because we're in a motion. This is all going to be part of your motion, whatever you're saying.
No, I don't want to.
Okay. Because we'll get around to discussion, because this is the.
Yeah, you're right.
So.
Leaping ahead.
Thank you. I will second the motion to postpone. It has been moved and seconded to postpone the approval of Tourism Board appointment. We don't have to put a time on it. I hesitate to put a time on it, because if we said after the 27th, or we could say after the 27th, we will meet again on the 31st of August, I don't know if you will have time to get your applicants in. So, I don't know what your desire is.
I would like to wait.
If you want to leave just to postpone it.
Want to make sure that we know, because I think we need to make sure it happens.
Okay. So then you're, then you're welcome to.
So I would like to, you know, I think the next meeting's two weeks away, and you're going to get the other applicant.
What I did is timelines, you know, August 27th, that would allow us to have a workshop, the Tourism Board, to go and view in time. We could do the 31st, but I really felt that September, the first week of September, we have to, which is just the next week, in case we needed to get and research more information.
Okay.
In regards to the applicants, you know, if they just did a letter of interest, okay, we've got three people, so, yeah.
If your, if your motion to postpone was to the 27th, or the next commission meeting, the 31st, that would only allow them four days. But it's your motion, you can do what you'd like. Our next.
That's why we have discussion.
Exactly. Our next, I just want to state the motion accurately, when I do state it. Our next BOCC meetings would be Tuesday, August 7th, Wednesday, August, I'm in wrong, sorry, September. Apologies. September the 4th and 5th would be the next BOCC meetings. I'm just giving you additional information, if you care to include that in your motion, but.
Why not? You should have time after the 27th, 28th, 29th, 30th.
Can I just make a suggestion?
Go ahead. Help me out.
Just a suggestion, I'm not trying to usurp your motion. How about they come to us and say, "We're ready to be put on the agenda."
I'm good with that.
And then they can come in.
That way they.
If it's the 31st, the 5th, the 4th, the 8th, whatever day.
I want to give them enough time to do the right thing.
That's, that was my concern.
Yes, so how about, would that be okay?
Let's postpone it until such time they come back and say, "We're ready to bring that a full slate."
And I will second that restated motion. It's been moved and seconded then to postpone the Tourism Board appointment until such time as the Tourism Board contacts the commissioners and asks for a spot on a subsequent agenda. Further discussion? Yes, sir?
My concern is, as it sits now, there's only two voting members on the board. Those will be the two who are vetting candidates.
There's only one.
There's only one.
No, there's two members. One's voting, one's ex officio. But she is a full-fledged member.
Well, that's right. So there's only one voting member. I'm having angst about one voting member voting on who should be recommended and who should not.
Well, that's, maybe.
Well, let him finish, let him finish.
He's right.
Let him finish, please.
So if, if we have someone who we feel is, I feel, is qualified, at least we'd have two people who could be in the vetting discussion to make recommendations for the minimum of three more people. And it doesn't have to be five, if I'm not mistaken.
No, three is.
You can find, you can get seven more applicants, and you could say, "I want all of them on as voting members," and I'm fine with that, you know? So, I hate to not have Mr. Ellison part of the, "Ooh, this would be a great person, this would be a great person," and they may just come back and say, "We've got four more applicants. I think all of them wonderful, let's get them on and see how it goes." So I'm just concerned, we're not going to have enough people.
I understand your concern. Now, I'm trying to think through the parliamentary law portion of this. Because of this unusual circumstance for the Tourism Board, it would be my opinion that they can bring a recommendation by consensus to us without a vote. We are the ones that are actually going to vote. Now, is it right? I don't know that. I understand your concern. It could be two people deciding who they're going to recommend to the board.
It would only be two, one ex officio.
Right. The actual vote will be from the commissioners. So I understand what you're saying.
Or, I'm just asking a question. Forget the parliamentary position, and incorrect.
Throw it out.
They, I think, the only voting they'd do would be to throw somebody out, and that would be wrong. I think if anybody applies, if they meet the criteria, we ought to be able to see if you ought to, you ought to afford American.
Yeah, but that's not how process works. They, they're.
Respectfully, I don't agree with that. I think that any committee, not just Tourism, any committee ought to say.
Here's who, they ought to say.
There are people who I want to work with, and I'm not worried about that, but if they come back and say, "Here are some people," or a person, or two people, whatever, "that I absolutely do not want to work with," they should have the right to say, "We don't want them on the committee."
Yeah, I think that's fair.
Yeah.
I do, that's why I asked the question, and I, but, but in our view, just because they want them, maybe they're off-base.
Absolutely agree with you.
Then we wouldn't approve them, and then we'd be in the same shape, we'd have to keep going.
I agree. Okay. So should we call the question?
Well, I don't think it, to me, the time it takes to wait that long, and what's business they got to do, they have all, we've already, that board has already overseen over 250,000 that's worth of stock. We know that there's more coming this year, and it's important to spend it, so that's why I want to be.
Like I said earlier, I think that's a separate issue.
Yeah, I do too.
And I think we can decide what we're going to require of the Tourism Board, quarterly, monthly statements, we want to know where that is coming and going. I have no problem with that, but I don't think it's part of this discussion.
No, I think you're accurate. Certainly are. Further discussion on the motion to postpone?
I will. I think it makes sense, because quite frankly, I thought we'd have those types of discussions before being run. I mean, at this point, I would expect that that was only to open up a conversation, and we talk about philosophies.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate all of the discussion, and we have public comment on this, because it's an agenda item. So I think we're well within the realm to have comments by both of these folks. I don't think we're out of order.
Just a rule of order before we vote. Are you, or do you feel it being appropriate for Mr. Ellison to sit in on discussions?
I do not, personally. But it's a, it will be a public meeting or a public workshop, so no one can stop him or anyone else from being in it.
Even the other.
But I do have, yeah.
That's my point.
But personally, I.
I think if you can event someone, you need to sit there and say, "Mr. Jones, Mrs. Smith, and what do you say?" So I like that idea.
I don't have a problem with them interviewing their candidates. I don't know that that should just be an open, roundtable discussion with all the candidates there. I think, this is my opinion, that's all it is. I'm not telling you what you have to do. If I were involved, and if I was going to vet a candidate and wanted that candidate there, then I would do that. I would not do that in front of all the other candidates, as a Tourism Board, if I were involved. But, these are all great questions, and they're all really brought to the surface because of these unusual circumstances. In a, in a normal situation, the representative of the Tourism Board would come and say, "Here are our following recommendations for you to vote on," and that would be it, really. I mean, the commissioners could ask, "Could you explain your recommendation," or whatever. So we're really in unusual waters here, but it's a great point.
I think it's a good discussion, I really do. Because in the past, I mean, we got hit with the Tourism recommendations without knowing anything that we got on in here. It's good, and I think in the past, other boards, not you, but other boards, have just rubber stamped whatever.
Same means.
Yeah. Possibly, because that kind of led to the unusual circumstances we have.
And there are other boards that I know personally I would like to question about. It's a whole different.
Well, that's a whole different topic. Anyway, I like this.
I think your point is well-taken.
I think it's a good one. I like the fact.
I think Mr. Ellison is happy with this. I'd say let's call the question.
Attorney Smith, any comments, or?
Not on the motion, it's on the table afterward. I have something else I want to talk about on this.
And before we do vote on this, I do want to say, sir, I respect you, I appreciate your interest for you being here. You know, I, I'm not trying to hide under the skirt, but it's a fact, I'm a relatively new commissioner, I want to make my decisions based on facts and as much information as I can gather. I call that due diligence, and I believe I owe that, I know these two gentlemen will agree, we owe that to our citizens of our county to operate under a due diligence thing. So, that's where I'm coming from. It's certainly not intended to be a personal attack on you, sir. Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote on postponing this item of business until such time as the Tourism Board requests to be on a subsequent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Thank you, sir, and thanks for being here, too.
So, does that first motion just die?
Well, no, you're, thank you, you're exactly right. The motion to postpone takes precedence over the main motion to appoint, and so therefore it does render that motion null and void.
Okay.
Yeah. Commissioner, or, sorry, Commissioner or Counselor?
Counselors.
I don't want to do what you.
You don't want to do this.
Just procedurally, we're kind of going to catch 22 here, because as it stands right now, there are five vacancies on the board for, well, the five.
Well, okay.
Well, we've got one, but there's, the, the bylaws call for five members. We have Resolution 12-01, that was passed by the Board of County Commissioners back in 2012, February 7, 2012, that says that these bylaws, have they, the board has reviewed and adopted the bylaws that were prepared by the Tourism Board. So those bylaws are in effect by resolution. The bylaws say, right now, that the Tourism Board shall be comprised of five members. All members must be residents of Custer County, one shall be a Custer County Commissioner. So, we're at, we're at.
So we've got to clean up a resolution.
We've got to, I mean, that was a resolution approving bylaws. I think we need to do another resolution that says that, and this doesn't require being done, I mean, the bylaws will, are going to be submitted subsequently, but I think we need a resolution that says, recognizes our new policy, that, you know, no commissioners will serve on.
We have to, because that supersedes that clause, and we're not going to be in board anymore. So that would void that one, and you can clean that up.
Well, but I guess what I'm saying is, right now, under this resolution, they're required to, to submit a county commissioner, or one of the, not them, you, to appoint one. You've already decided we aren't going to appoint one, so I don't know if we're asking the Tourism Board to submit four recommendations, if they get that many.
I, can you read that again, please? Was it, "Must be made up of a minimum of five, including a seated commissioner?"
Shall be comprised of five members. All members must be residents of the county, one shall be a Custer County Commissioner.
All right. So we would.
My general thinking is that the, I don't remember the resolution number, but the resolution we recently passed would supersede this resolution, and should give direction to the Tourism Board of where to go with their new set of bylaws. I mean, obviously, they have to rewrite them.
I was just going to mention that, you're absolutely correct. The discussion, and you were there, and the meeting before that, is once a board is seated, one of their first tasks will be to update and correct the bylaws.
Yeah.
So that, they understand, they understand that, and that is a task they're willing to take on.
And thank you, Counselor. I, for some reason, I had in my mind that the, that the number was three and not five.
The statute said three.
Got you.
But we appointed.
The bylaws.
Bylaws can have more, and the county commissioners agree, so I would account.
And that's, but I think right now, they're limited to five until.
Yeah, until they.
They change it, but they would have to comply with the new requirement that it not be a county commissioner.
And, and for sure, five meets the statute that stood them up.
And I don't mean beat this horse to death, but I take exception a little of that, because I also believe that it says that the commissioners may at any time appoint additional members to the Tourism Board as ex officio. So that takes off of the magic number of five. I think the minimum number, if we take the commissioner out of the picture, it then becomes four. But the Board of Commissioners has the authority to appoint members to that Tourism, Tourism Board to serve in an ex officio capacity as well.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm under the impression that an ex officio member can be a voting member if it's, if the bylaws or the group agrees.
There is a huge misunderstanding about ex officio members, and you're exactly right. Very, very few people would know and understand, truly, an ex officio member has the right to vote.
I believe that.
That is, out of Robert's Rules, I've researched that numerous times in the last couple of months. That leads to questioning, what is the purpose of an ex officio member? And it, to me, as a common sense-based person, doesn't make a lot of sense.
The only place I found it, because I've had, I've faced this numerous times in the past, was if they had residence, attendance requirements, any person who misses X amount of meetings will no longer be a member of a specific board, and I'm talking about Tourism, just in general. And they said an ex officio member is someone who can come in and do that.
Yeah, set in as a quorum.
So they don't normally vote, unless they have a.
No, the voting rights stay with them.
Yes.
They can be counted as part of a quorum. Ex officio members could be counted as part of, to fulfill the quorum requirements, whatever they are. So people have asked, "Well, then what's the difference?" And it's very, very vague to me, but I, as I've read it, I've tried to figure out, I think it is.
That they don't vote, if they had a quorum?
No, they are voting members, truly, they are, according to Robert's Rules of Order, the revised edition. So historically, and in most organizations, and I would guess in 100% of the organizations in our county, they would view ex officio members as a non-voting member.
Correct.
Technically, that is not correct. So either we go all in, or we leave that sleeping dog alive. Because we will, we will shake the earth that a lot of people walk on, because people will vehemently swear up and down, ex officio members do not vote.
So, yeah, I guess we don't.
That's another cap to skin, at some other point, and I guess we need to look at that. If we're going to run our county according to Robert's Rules of Orders, which has been a resolution, then we need to take a hard look at that and move forward.
So, if there weren't three members appointing people, it would be different. Chairman, chairman could appoint an ex officio, all, all.
Uh, no, chairman, chairman cannot.
How do they get ex officio members?
Uh, the board of which that person, the chairman, can decide that. They can bring somebody on as an ex officio member.
Actually, the, the bylaws right now say one or more ex officio members may be appointed annually at the discretion of the Board of County Commissioners. Ex officio members shall have no voting rights. That's the bylaws.
That's the bylaws.
And that's, and that's perfectly fine to do that.
Yeah, they can, they can opt out of that. That's true.
We're good.
So.
And it also says that the, you know, if there is a vacancy, the tourism board may first recommend that the commissioners appoint an ex officio member to fill the vacancy. My understanding, Renee wasn't interested in being a.
She was, and then pulled off.
Okay.
Of course, she didn't want to be an ex officio member.
We could appoint somebody.
We could, as ex officio.
Actually, if, if there's nobody to appoint, the tourism board shall post notice of the vacancy. I mean, if you want to add additional ex officio members, I don't see any prohibition to that.
Right, that's the way I read it.
Yeah.
So.
We're good, just come back.
Well, that's, yeah, that's been decided, so. Okay, we'll move on then. Fremont County Humane Society Agreement for 2019. I have those doc, or that document. They've requested four copies. I'm assuming, gentlemen, you've had an opportunity to look at that document. It has currently been signed by Paul Linky, the mayor of West Cliff. My question to Kathy Rice from the town of West Cliff was, is it to our benefit to enter into an agreement with them financially? Her opinion was, yes, it was. One or two cases of us having to foot the bill would probably more, cost more than our share. And this share of 900 and.
908.
Nine oh eight.
Her share is 302.67.
Yeah, so we, that's an even split between the two municipalities and the county. So, we're looking at $302. Her opinion was, it would be worthwhile financially for us to enter into that agreement.
And the county has done this annually since I've been county attorney.
Chair would entertain a motion.
I move, we, what we're moving to do, though, is it, indeed, the partner, right?
Yeah, enter into that agreement. Fremont County.
Fremont County.
I'll second the motion. It's been moved and seconded to enter into an agreement with the Humane Society of Fremont County for the impound services discussion. I thought I saw a discussion sitting on your lip, sir.
He's resisting.
No, I was going to just mention that, what councillor just said, that this is an odd, I didn't know if you knew that this was not a new thing. I was just going to give you that history. Thank you, councillor.
Good. Any other discussion? Hearing none will proceed to vote. All in favor of entering, pardon me?
Do you have a comment?
Oh, yeah, thank you, yeah. Public comment? This is an agenda item.
Come on, Shannon.
I don't have a dog.
Say something.
And I was going to ask.
Tell me, he's all about dying.
Not the dog in this fight.
Just go fight my dog.
Sheriff Bobby, you have any comment?
Well, I mean, the reality is, and I've kind of pointed to it already, and Jay already looked, there's a lot of history there with it, because the challenge is, there are no shelters within the county. There is a, an effort going on to, to make that a reality at some juncture. You may be, where you just raised a little over $2,000 at the tip of a coffin, Willie's, that we participate in, to go towards that reality one day. But, because we don't have a shelter, it causes some challenges, specifically because we're finding more folks are moving into the county that come from areas that are used to, if you see a dog around, and you just snatch him up, it doesn't matter that it's somebody's cow dog that's 25 yards from their driveway.
Be nuts, drive them up my front yard in the driveway.
Yeah, they're picking them up right off.
Had to go to Wadlow, Buena Vista.
And so, that, because people are, they're not used to seeing dogs that are running, and I'm not advocating that dogs should just be running free, but the reality is, is that most folks don't keep their catalogs locked up, because catalogs don't drift to that far, others do. So, it's an expense, and it's expensive when you start, if you don't have an agreement, because I think the shelter, you know, if, if somebody brings in an animal, and, and folks have kind of learned a little bit, so if they bring, because we don't take animals, I'm not in the animal business, nor do I intend to be in the animal business, that's expensive. So, they bring you in, right, they, they say, right, oh, we found it in town of West Cliff, because they know that we can at least go put the dog somewhere, and then West Cliff arranges for that dog to actually go to the, to the Humane Society if we don't find the owner. But that gets expensive quick if we don't have the agreement, so your money ahead.
Yeah, the alternative, if we don't do this, then we're on the hook to deal with it as a county if a situation arises.
Right, and we might have two dogs in 2019, or we might have 25 dogs. You're rolling the dice.
Do you know that West Cliff has what they call their doggy jail?
Yeah.
They have, okay.
And Silver Cliff used to have.
Right.
Up in Silver Cliff Town.
Yeah, and that, that, there's bitterness that we don't want to get into.
Okay, I agree with that, but really issue, not just housing, the animal is feeding it, but if the animal is ill, now we've got to pay for vet bills and all kinds of things.
Yeah, feed and.
This solves the problem.
Rabid dog.
You don't know.
Okay, further public comment? Thank you, ma'am, for reminding me. Hearing none will proceed to vote. All in favor of signing the agreement with Fremont County? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay? Motion carries. I think, two votes.
I said aye.
Oh, you did? Sorry, I didn't hear you.
I said a softly.
Oh, did you say yea or nay?
I said yea.
Oh, sorry, I didn't.
I didn't, I didn't hear him vote at all.
I apologize.
I didn't, just couldn't hear, I mean, welcome to do whatever you think's right.
Over the years, we've had about three dogs picked up right in front of our place. One, one ended up in Denver, the other, for most reason, one ended up Buena Vista. And there, and there are people from Denver that see this dog sitting out there, oh, look at the pretty dog, cute dog, and they open the door, and the dog jumps in. And then they think they're doing somebody a favor by taking it out of the county. I don't understand that. And they dumped it in the Buena Vista shelter. And if, and if we hadn't have gotten there two days later, it'd been.
They'd have euthanized it.
Euthanized, you know, crazy.
Killed it.
For the record, then, I will sign all four copies as the chairman of the V O C C, and I will give those back to Ms. Gady, and she will forward them on to the town of Silver Cliff for their actions, whatever those may be. Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate that.
Whatever. Dog collars, they call you up.
Yeah, 60 miles away.
Any further new business come before the meeting at this time, gentlemen? Hearing none will move on. Public comment? Final opportunity? Yes, sir?
Um, so, I just want to bring up a couple things up. So, I apologize that I wasn't able to make the signing with Ms., with Verdehega on the police purchase agreement, but I did want to extend my appreciation to the commissioners for making that happen on behalf of the judicial committee. So, I, I want to say that. I had a question for the three of you, so I asked Ms. Hobbie, and she said that she didn't have, know the answer to this, so longevity, for, for budget purposes, as you all know, Doc has said that we have to have our budgets in by the 7th of September, so I'm trying to work on that. And longevity has been discussed and been discussed, and we have not gotten a final answer. Are we doing longevity?
Great point.
Is that happening?
Being there, not cost of living, it's five years.
You raise, you raise a great point. My suggestion to my fellow commissioners is, is that we put that very thing on the agenda. It would not be proper for us to, to entertain a motion to that effect today, because we didn't have 24-hour notice.
No, I understand.
But, your point is well taken.
We haven't had an answer. We've got an argument, all of us do.
And I hope that all of you can wait for an answer until our next commissioner meeting, because I would ask Brenda to put that very thing on the agenda, and I think it needs to be dealt with, in all fairness. Then we'll have to make a decision about that, if you guys are okay with that.
Somebody's going to have to come to us with pros and cons.
So, well, we can, we can research that. So, if Ms. Brenda would do that, we'll, we will put that on the next agenda. Thank you for bringing that up, sir. That kind of fell through the cracks, obviously, so.
Are you going to have a big sale for the transmission unit you want to pay for?
I'm just going to miss.
Yeah.
I just wanted to jump the gun.
Anything else, Mr. Byerly?
So, I, I just want to do an update. I sent you all the emails, so Gary Hyde got back to me, they're going to arrange for the vehicle to be taken to Aztec Transmissions, but hopefully, I mean, we're, we're anticipating the last transmission, and that was about 2,800, but that was a, in a pickup that was not full-time, all-wheel-drive, and we all, if you're familiar, you know, those all-wheel-drive vehicles, it's more, so I'm hoping we get away with $3,000. We, we lucked out, the day before, that vehicle had to go all the way to Grand Junction and back, and so it lasted that trip, and it just broke down, down below the harsh gravel.
Who drives that vehicle typically?
Charles Cox.
So, was Gary taking it?
Aztec Transmissions in Kansas City. They've done our transmission work in prior, with several others, that we've had that work done, so. So, we do have that arranged. They'll get it down there later this week, is the hope, and then we'll know next week.
I have every confidence that you have funds available in your current budget.
Well, I don't, I mean, I don't really have, yeah, I do, but I don't have a lot of options.
Yeah.
I mean, it's because, right, so now he's driving a vehicle, now that has about $240,000 on it. It should have been deadline sometime near soon.
Well, and I would say, I think, on behalf of commissioners, I mean, if you do not, I was being a little facetious, I mean, obviously, to me, this is kind of an emergency thing. I would say if the finances are an issue.
I'm pretty sure we're good to go, but I always like to just let you, give you a heads up that, I mean, you're going to see a $3,000 bill being paid.
Okay, perfect.
And as a citizen, and as the sheriff vote, I want to say thank you for the chip seal job on Copper Gulch Road. That, I mean, I've lived out there now for three and a half years, whereas that is the absolute best that road has ever been in that time period, and quite frankly, haven't driven it more than the last three and a half years. I don't ever remember being quite.
They did a great job.
Did it for Oak Creek Grade, by the way.
Yeah, and.
So, it's really nice.
Good, thank you. Appreciate that. I'd like to follow up that, really, if you don't mind, real quick, because I've been asked this, and I couldn't answer it, and I have not been on Copper Gulch, or Oak Creek Grade, I'm sorry. What part of that did they chip seal?
All the way to the entrance to Bull Domingo.
Okay, from the highway, from 96.
On Copper Gulch.
You're talking about Oak Creek Grade.
Oak Creek Grade, out to switch gears.
Oh, did they chip seal Oak Creek Grade?
Yeah.
Only out to the.
Well, that's as far as the asphalt.
Out to your place, basically.
Yeah, I, I keep hoping that they'll.
Have to make that turn.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Out to the first entrance of Bull Domingo.
Where the pavement always was.
Yeah, I've been on the new chip seal on Muddy Lane. Did a great job, really did.
And they did a good job in West Cliff. I think they did a better job in West Cliff.
Well, they had better conditions to work with.
You know, plus, I have to say, for Oak Creek Grade, they did some major work on the gravel portion.
Oh, yeah.
And that has held up in all this heavy rain. Normally, that would have been just a quidmire, and it's held up in all this rain, so they did a really good job.
And as just a side note, and I don't mean to interrupt you, if you have other things to add, sir, I'll wait. Go ahead, no.
I just wanted to, just to let you know, so I will be out of Petreus beginning of the 23rd of August through the, I'll be back to work on the 4th of September, just letting you know.
Going Africa.
On a safari, big safari.
Other thing I just wanted to mention, and obviously, we all know that, because we came here from West Cliff today, but CDOT has done a pretty good job of getting this highway open. We talked about it coming up here. My gosh, there was more damage, more washout than I expected. And I know this highway was closed for a while, and now I understand why, and appreciate the fact that it wasn't closed longer than it was. There's some brutal conditions down there. Yeah. May I also update us on one other thing I should have brought under commissioner items, and I totally forgot that, because you may get phone calls about this. And that has to do with the repairing the phone line on highway, on County Road 386, which was totally washed out. So, just so that you gentlemen know, I have been in contact with Abel Chavez from Century Link, I have talked with John Baumshin from the Forest Service. We are trying to put together that meeting as soon as possible. We all three, obviously, will be invited to that. My perspective on that is, I believe the county needs to, to make that area accessible. I don't think probably the county will end up restoring that road. The Forest Service is not interested in having that road. That's a conversation we'll have to have at a roundtable meeting with all those parties. The general thought now is, whenever that date, Century Link, what did I say?
County.
Well.
Century Link.
County's not going to fix the road.
I don't know what the county will do, but my sense is, the county will probably not restore that road. If you don't know, that phone line was plowed right down the center of County Road 386 at about, I'm roughly estimate, 1,000 yards of that road is no longer in existence, and probably 800 yards of that telephone line is torn up in pieces and exposed. So, that's the whole point of this meeting that's coming up. We will be invited to that meeting. The other thing I wanted to let you know is, the general thinking now is that prior to that formal meeting, which we're going to try to have in Wetmore, at which those phone customers will be invited to that meeting, but we'd like to get a core four or five pertinent people to go and tour that area the afternoon prior to that meeting. So, I don't know when that meeting is going to be. I told Abel, why don't you give us some dates, and we'll go from there. So, that's kind of the update on where we're at.
How many people are there?
32 people.
32 people.
Well, I don't know how many people are up there. There are 32 people currently without phone service. Four of those people.
32 residences.
Pardon?
32 residents.
Yes, residences, sorry. Four of those people have officially filed protest with PUC. Many of those people have contacted Century Link and voiced their very adamant opinions about the reason they haven't had phone in the last three weeks, and so, that's where we're at. So, we are moving forward, we're just waiting for Century Link to pick a date.
Well, the key, the key, a couple key factors there, so, my first question would be, so are you going to allow some of these citizens to come to that meeting? Or are you going to try to keep it a business to begin with?
Okay, yeah. All, according to Abel Chavez, he would like to invite all of the phone customers to that meeting in Wetmore.
Okay.
Not to tour the damaged area.
Yeah, right, 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 yeah, I don't think you want to. So, I, I think a couple things come into factor, because there's probably a good chance that you'll have that meeting, and I'm not going to be able to go, because I'm going to be gone at that time.
Correct.
But Chris Barkin comes.
Okay.
But, but I think the angle's first off, public safety. Those folks cannot dial 911, and a great portion, if not every single one of those customers, they have zero cell service at their residence as well. And we're talking from Clara Rata, who's on oxygen and in very poor health, no way to get.
Her phone is out?
Her phone is out, has been out. But more importantly, this is where, and I'm not a Century Link fan, I've never sugarcoated that, because of their lack of customer service at many levels, but this was an issue long before that road was damaged and the flooding occurred. Those folks were having significant issues with their phone service with Century Link before the flooding, and before that road was damaged, and they had full access to go in there and correct the problem ahead of time. They had zero interest, and they were adamantly, they basically, I won't use the language, they, but they insinuated that we could take the flood and leave it rolling, don't it? So, so they brought this on themselves because they failed to act when they had an opportunity to, and I don't think we can let that issue just fall to the wayside.
Right.
They could have addressed it, had this issue, had they done it from this onset, so.
And I don't want to stack against, the deck against Century Link, but I need to tell you that I've had three Century Link customers that are without phones tell me, when they called Century Link, Century Link told them that would be repaired the following day. That has happened twice to three different people, and Century Link, I'm sure you know how-
Had no intention of fixing it the next day.
They were, they were just trying to patronize those guys.
Well, I mean, there's millions of dollars of damage to the road and everything, I mean, I understand, they can't just get in there, I get it.
They gotta have access. And I've spoken with our road bridge supervisor about that. Actually, he will be at that meeting as well. You have something?
I was just gonna mention that, I think as a county, when we have constituents that could be in grave danger by unable to dial for assistance if they need it, I think we ought to decide that we need to put maximum pressure on them-
I agree.
-to do something. Now, I'm not saying it's entirely their problem, and maybe we need to be somewhat part of the solution, maybe Road and Bridge needs to do something, dig a ditch for them to put a new line, I don't know, I'm just bringing up, but I think we could say to them, guys, you ever want to put a new tower up here, you want to do some phone service, we're not gonna forget. That kind of stuff.
And the county did, we didn't accept that road, did we? It's right away.
Well, it's a county road.
It's a maintained county road, that Gary Sangrater's up there.
I think it was.
Forest Service road.
I don't think it is. I don't think-
It's a county road across Forest Service land.
Was county and part of it.
And that, that road crosses private property and enters-
So we have some obligation.
I just get very upset when I hear someone say, you know, you want to dial 911, you can't get help? Too bad.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, we have a responsibility.
Well, the Forest Service offered to Century Link that, look, we'll help you get access to get in there, and Century Link's only, the only thing acceptable to them is that the road's open, and they can drive around and do whatever they want, when they want, on their own timeframe, and that's not realistic.
Their actual-
It's irresponsible.
Communication was, we want 24/7, 365 access to that. Well, that's, we all know, that's not gonna happen. So they need access to it, I don't, I don't disagree.
I just feel we need to put whatever-
And I agree with you 100%, we need to start, and maybe that is to say, refresh my memory, are we, do you have any equipment on any towers in our county, currently?
Right, and I don't want to start a war, and I don't want to take service away from someone that is using it on the town and now, but, I mean, we need to get very proactive on this, in my opinion.
I agree. Further public comment? Thank you, sir.
I got a question for the sheriff. What do you think of, of your time, how are you gonna handle, West Cliff is going one way on-
You think there's somebody in there right now?
To the west. So that's gonna kind of bottleneck up some intersection, it seems to me.
Well, it's, it's just gonna, it's gonna change the traffic.
I know, it's only that you gotta have-
Yeah, yeah, by law, you have to, anytime you're gonna change a traffic pattern, you have to, has to be posted, you have to wait 30 days and all, before you can put another back, you gotta have this car for signature. Jay, Jay was in on that discussion, and West Cliff Town, they've kind of got, it sounds like all the bases come.
Because you gave me all that stuff to put in my-
The reality is, is that something has to be done there, because, I mean, I'm telling you, I couldn't drive down Main Street, I couldn't fly down. Thinking about the market, and I get it, and we tried to write a bunch of tickets, we tried, well, not quite.
The trucks with the, pickup trucks used to have.
38.
Well, what we did have, you don't, you don't know this, is Hanson Garage, which where the taco shop is.
I have a Hanson Garage sign.
I know, and they had semis coming out of that door that faces me, and-
It's just-
I get it.
We have-
Been like this for 100 years.
But back then, Bill, we have, we have 1,000 times more traffic now.
I know, that's why, I mean, that's why I said, yeah.
That's the problem, is that traffic flows-
Well, and you get people that are not used to being careful.
And that's right, and I'm not a decision-
They're looking around, they're not paying attention.
And I'm not a decision maker at West Cliff or anything, but looking out my window, I watched the trucks that are, that are way beyond, and people have to go around those into oncoming traffic, so when they came to me as a business owner and said, what do you think about one way? First, they talked about parallel, and then they said, you know, by the time, by the time they double up to move ahead, you're gonna create even more problems. So one way seemed like a reasonable solution, because then you could widen the road. It seemed reasonable, I, I'm, like I said, I'm not a decision maker, but-
Didn't fly.
They did, they approved it.
Oh, they approved the one way?
As they go west.
It's going west. It'll be one way going west, and what they, what they're talking about now, they